Okay, we all set again?
I did check the camera.
Thank you. All right, make an open session.
Okay. Well, I will make a motion on two allegations brought against a employee. The council recommends recommendations that the claims do not warrant further action and be closed.
Is there a second?
All second.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
No.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
No.
Motion carries three, two. No further action to be taken. Just for the record as well, the information pertaining those, since no action was taken, will be considered private data. Okay, the positions. The Administrator Clerk Treasurer position, we may have some changes in reference to that. Shawn has indicated that he would be willing, wants to move into that position if it was provided. And his title may become the Public Works Director slash Clerk Treasurer. In discussions with Wendy, Wendy has indicated that she does not wish to seek advancement to the Administrator position and wants to remain in her current position. And that the title for that will not change. The, let's see here, the Deputy Clerk would have no supervisory responsibilities. And the Clerk One slash Clerk Two would have no supervisory responsibilities. In our preliminary discussions with the Union, Representative Rick over here, it was recommended that those positions not be included in the Union. However, Wendy's would continue to be in the Union and Shawn's, the Supervisor Position, would be in the Union. Anything further to add on that? So the Administrator Clerk Treasurer would be adjusted. We're going to do some preliminary looking into the League of Minnesota Cities and how that came out. And the recommendation would we need to have a Clerk Treasurer tied to one of those positions, correct?
You have to have a Clerk and a Treasurer, or a Clerk Treasurer, or however you want to do it.
Or a Finance Administrator.
It has, the title by state statute has to be someplace that someone has named the City Clerk and the Treasurer. Whether it be one person, two people, some people split it out between City Clerk and Treasurer, some people split it out between, some people just do it all as one, or some cities. But you have to have somebody with a City Clerk and Treasurer title.
And that's what you're currently at right now?
I am the Deputy Clerk.
Deputy Clerk.
Yes. And the reason that, I mean, and I, like what Greg said before, but I think we need to back up a little bit because my Deputy Clerk position, the way it was before, does have some supervisory.
Yeah. Responsibilities.
Responsibilities. And I wouldn't be changing that. I'm just going to stay where I'm at.
It would have supervisor.
That would keep me in the Union where I'm at. And we can get rid of, we don't have to have a City Administrator. We checked into it because when we were reading the League of Minnesota Cities stuff, it talked about an Administrator and administering the budget. When I called League of Minnesota Cities, they said, "We can't give you legal advice, but what we can tell you is some cities go without an Administrator. You just have to make sure you define those duties somewhere else." So you just have to make sure you have those duties listed, if you don't have an Administrator. So.
So last week then, when we were in our meeting with the Personnel Committee and Council Meeting.
We thought we had.
Yeah, Administrator slash Clerk Treasurer is what the title was.
That's because that's what we had before. We thought that's what we had to have. When I checked before, that's what I was, that's what we were told. And I checked with other cities and that's what they all were telling me.
Okay.
If I called the League, and the League won't give you legal advice. All they'll tell you is, "You can get by without one." They, what they said was, "You can get by without one, some cities do, a lot of cities don't." Because there's a lot of duties that the Administrator does. If you go without one, make sure you've looked at it clearly and you understand that someone has to have those duties.
Okay, so when we went into this discussion and we put it on the agenda, why are we not looking at this stuff before it's out there and getting all these people riled up? Get the facts before we bring it out?
I did get the facts at one point, but.
But we, so they changed?
Well, they can't give me legal advice.
Right.
So they told you what if you wanted an Administrator. Now they came back and said, "Well, you don't have to have one."
So you originally called the League of Cities?
And I called other cities besides.
Okay, because I think you just said you called other cities and then you recently called the League.
Well, I talked to the League before too, and they said, and they said, "Most cities have an Administrator and you'll want to look at that before you don't have one."
Okay.
So then I called them back and I talked to, I sent them an email actually, and said, "Can you please get someone to do more research on this?" And when I came back, well, then they actually called me and said, "You can get by without it, but just make sure you give those duties because there are specific job duties for an Administrator."
Because the council was originally told that we had to have a City Administrator in order to do our budget.
That's what they.
And if we don't have.
Have a separation of between the person doing the budget and the one approving the budget. So you have to have that separation.
And that's what, that's why they told me the first time was about the budget. And so I specifically asked them again, "Do you need an Administrator?" My understanding is Administrator is the one who oversees the budget and blah blah. And I said, "Well, you can, as long as you assign that somewhere, you can go by, get by without it." So. So yes, I did tell you one thing months before, because that's what they told me. And then now this time she said, "Well, we can't give you legal advice, but."
So we'll change that, like if Shawn takes this, well then, he'll have that work duties.
Well, now they're saying if, if we agree to hire within, and we agree to, just use me as an example, make sure I get this right. Shawn would be Public Works Director slash Clerk Treasurer.
That's correct.
City Clerk Treasurer.
And Wendy would remain as a Deputy Clerk. And Anna would move to Clerk One, Clerk Two?
No, Anna's already in. Anna's already in Clerk Two.
Clerk Two. So Anna would stay.
Mm-hmm. What other changes do we have, Shawn?
If this were to go this route, I'd like to see Anna be my Administrative Assistant in the office. Continuing doing all the necessary paperwork for council meetings, council correspondence, correspondence with the Clerk Treasurer, and preparing any documents that need to be prepared, undermined, or the Clerk's oversight.
Could include that in Clerk One's job duties.
Clerk One is, the current job duties are taking care of utility, building, period.
Okay, well, what's Clerk Two then?
Clerk Two is the same as a Clerk One, just a promotional. They've been here for, or passed their probationary period. They have the option of being promoted to Clerk Two.
Clerk One, Clerk Two is the same position, same duties.
But, okay, these duties that you want to do, instead of hiring another person, we can just incorporate.
We wouldn't have to hire another person, though.
Not for administration?
We wouldn't have to lay off anybody either.
And it also saves us a considerable amount as well, hiring from within, to, we allow it us to have that operational lead that we've got in the, in the process, in our structure. And that then allows Shawn to have the time that he needs to focus on particularly the key issues that are coming up, is the CIP and the Comprehensive Five-Year Plan, as well as the Park Five-Year Plan, which are massive, massive projects, for those of the issues that we're looking at.
I don't know if you guys have been handed this here. We've got a lot of work to do, people.
So if, if we go the way of hiring within, promoting you, obviously there's a raise involved.
I hope so.
Okay.
There should be, yes.
Right, right. And that would be.
Just so that you know, both Shawn and Wendy's pay has been frozen for almost three years.
Because of their Union contract?
Because of the Union contract.
That was their choice. But, just saying, what are you looking at? Have you thought about?
I haven't. I didn't want to, just for the fact that if it weren't to fly, I wasn't going to spend a whole lot of time on it and think about it.
If we were to promote Anna into the position, into your assistant, there would always go to be a raise involved with that, correct?
There would be, yes.
Have you thought about a dollar amount on that?
The Administrative Position, Administrative Assistant Position is roughly $2, no quote exactly.
Right, just a rough.
I don't have the paperwork in front of me.
Yeah.
Between $2 and $2.40.
An hour more.
Yes.
Okay, and, okay, I won't.
Yeah, and then the other thing that has to be done on those is the comparable worth reviewed. And we did some preliminary discussions on it, but didn't want to go too far into it until we brought it to council and see where we're at with it, and whether or not we should move forward with this solution. Because clearly there was opposition to Wendy moving into the position of Administrator slash Clerk Treasurer. And in talking with Wendy, she did not want to move into that position because quite frankly, she didn't want to jeopardize her position in the Union or to go into a situation where she would be confronted, you know, in the daily work that she had to do. So it was a decision that she decided she didn't want to be promoted into the Administrator slash Treasurer position. Is that about the conversation we had, Wendy?
Now, somebody's going to check qualifications and all this, so we're going to do this in later data.
Well, I think the question right now is, do we just hire within, or do we open to the public?
And if we look at not having an Administrator, that changes our comparable worth a little bit, saved us a little bit as well. I don't know the exact dollar figures on the, on the savings of it because we haven't flushed all of that out yet because we wanted to find out what council thought about it. Because everything was very preliminary. In fact, I hadn't even gone the first step maybe yet. And I touched base with Jill on the phone.
In other words, we're kind of jumping the horse here.
Well, no, we're not really jumping the for, the horse. We're looking at what the feelings are.
We want to get your guys' opinion as an entire council before Personnel goes and discusses it like we did last time, which seemed to have backfired, so we're.
Yeah, well, that's kind of what we're doing now. We voted for that change, and then we come back with Wendy and we ran into that snake. So I think, you know, here too now, I think the public should be up there.
They are.
There's not as many here as there was at the council meeting last week.
That's, we can't control who shows up in the public. So what, what would you like to see done, Lloyd?
Well, I don't know. We, there's a lot of blanks here. He don't know what figure he's going to ask for.
He's not going to invest.
I'm not going to vote on a blank check.
We're not, we're not asking, we're not voting on pay right now. It has nothing to do with pay.
Well, it kind of, because if we decide to promote Shawn right now, Shawn's going to want a raise.
Yes.
You said that.
Right. And the public is going to want to know, "What did we just increase that to?"
But we're not voting on an actual dollar figure yet. That would be at a later date.
Right, but I don't want to, you know, put it up and say, "Shawn, you're in it, this is your job now," and then have him come back and say, "Well, I'm just putting it out there. I make this amount now and I want this amount," and then we turn around and say, "No." That kind of puts Shawn in a position of saying, "I really wish I would have done this." You know, I mean.
That's why he's walking softly now.
I'm not willing to invest a lot of effort again without some consensus on the council as to where we're headed.
I think there was consensus, well, maybe not. I could be wrong.
No, there wasn't.
Okay.
Can I interject something?
Can I?
Yeah. Can I just say something?
Go ahead.
You can look at it two ways too. Shawn can stay where he's at, make what he's making, and I'll make what I'm making, and Anna will stay where she's at, and you'll lay off Nicole and pay unemployment, and you'll hire a City Clerk, Administrator, Treasurer, whatever you advertise it for, and pay another whole wage.
And pay 71,000 dollars minimum.
Or you'll promote somebody, I'm pretty sure he's not going to ask for $150,000.
Probably not. I, probably not.
And you'll give Anna a $2 or whatever, an hour raise, and you still will be saving a lot of money. I mean, you really will.
Okay, right.
And I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, just something to think about.
Oh, I, I get it.
Because if you, you know, if you, if you go up for applications, you're hiring another whole body, and City Clerk Treasurer.
Yeah, and Cocato outsourced, was it Cocato we talked to?
Cocato went through a hiring agency and they paid $14,000 to get somebody to come in there.
But I, I think the consensus of the City, not the council, the City is, "We're willing to pay whatever it takes to get the best person in for the job." Totally lost my train of thought.
Well, I think Jill made that comment too at the meeting, that we should probably do what the public wants and hire from out posted and get a real qualified revenue.
I have one other thing to say too. You also have to remember, there was three people that got up and spoke at the council meeting out of 3,040 people. We're not talking about the entire public. We're talking about three people.
At that meeting, correct. But I've also gotten, you know, people, I, we coach 25 kids, 25 families in this town four days a week, and everybody's like, "You owe it to the public to open it up."
But don't you think that maybe some of us have also maybe heard from other people saying, "Right, we would like you to do this."
Yep, so, so that's why we're in this discussion.
I don't hear you talking though.
Yeah, you're not down there saying, "Well, my neighbor said."
No, because I'm voting for what, what I think is right and what I think we should do, and that's what I say.
I'm voting for what I think the town wants, not what I want.
What's good for the.
Because what I want.
What's good for the City, just like Jill said, even if it should cost more, is what 's good for the City.
But I'm thinking about all the people that I've talked to and putting that into my opinion too, into my vote.
Right, because, I mean, I worked with Shawn for two years now, and I think he's doing a phenomenal job, but I also have to justify to 3,000 people why I chose to go with Shawn and not at least look to see if somebody else is qualified. You know, I mean, that, that's, I'm not looking for just me, because that's not the right thing to do. My is to look for what everybody wants.
What the public wants.
This may not be the right place to say this, but how did you justify to 3,000 people with unfounded information on firing someone?
Very carefully, because again.
We, we wouldn't be in this hiring issue if that hadn't happened.
You know what?
That's what I'm saying.
So, I'm not going to disagree with that.
So where, where is that justification for those 3,000 people? I'm a taxpayer, and at that time, I wasn't on the council.
Correct.
And.
You didn't have an opportunity to speak because it was a residency.
Exactly. I didn't get a chance to go to that meeting. I didn't agree with that. Where was my say in any of that as a citizen?
I agree.
Where was any of the other citizens who don't agree with that and have now, you know?
Have you found one?
I found many.
Because I haven't.
Boy, I haven't either.
You know, with that being said, and in the, the situation that we're in, you opened the door on this one. Did you look at the?
Yeah, it was all outdated, unfounded information.
Because, did you get the termination letter and read all of that?
Hold on, you cannot discuss the.
No.
Tread lightly.
I'm done.
Recommendation, council tread lightly on that topic and move on.
I'm done. But, okay, so, I, I, again, I'm just gonna, like I said, I think, I don't think that Shawn, I think Shawn would be a great opportunity. As I said, I've worked with him for two years. He's, does his due diligence, due diligence on everything. He saves, saves us money, you know? He investigates everything that he's, that we would want him to do. But, I still say we open it up. Shawn puts, puts his information out there, and we do the best thing that we can do because my understanding is, you know, he's going to want a raise and everything, but we still have barb on our.
Payroll.
On our payroll. So we're still paying.
At, at a much cheaper rate for one year.
Right, so where are we finding this money with, so technically, if we don't, we still have barb on the payroll.
The issue remains that we have to have two people for oversight for the financial piece. Absolutely. The question is, how do we address that issue? Do we hire from within, or do we seek to hire outside? And that's the question before the council now. Do we hire from within, given the changes that have been made and the fact that Wendy is not seeking that position? Or do we seek to hire from outside to fill an Administrator position? Or a Clerk Treasurer position?
Yeah, we wouldn't have to hire an Administrator. We don't need one, and that's a proven fact, why would we advertise for one?
It'd be a Clerk Treasurer position, it wouldn't have to be. And that would also require.
And then, by putting it out for bid, don't mean that Shawn wouldn't get it. It's just that the citizens would feel.
No, it doesn't. If we intend to hire from within, why are we going to spend $10,000 to $14,000 putting it out there for somebody else that we're going to hire from within? That's frivolous.
Shawn, I have a question for you, because I know right now your duties are loaded. Do you honestly think you can handle it? I know that you, there's.
Absolutely.
Okay. I know there's talk of moving up one of the maintenancees into that supervisory position.
That's an add across.
I just want to make sure that you think you can, or you know you can, you can give both positions because they are both crucial for the City.
This is a decision that I haven't come lightly.
Right.
I have agonized over this for days. My wife and I both, and my first feeling was, no way. There's no way. And then, the more I thought about it, it's an opportunity for me, it's an opportunity for my family, and it's an opportunity for the City.
And I would say.
Other employees in the City.
I would say also that Shawn brings a special insight to that position as well with respect to his background in the Public Works Department. And that's a key piece of developing one of the critical things that we need, and that's the capital improvement plan. It hasn't been addressed for about eight years because we haven't had a council that has looked into that and made sure we did that. And the five-year plan is significantly stale. So those things need to be processed through, and I think Shawn brings great insight to that. I think he also has a real good head for where we're at in the budget as well. So I don't think that it's a stretch for him to reach out and fill those oversight duties with respect to the financial piece.
And I'm going to throw this in next. I too had communication with several residents after the council meeting on Monday night, wondering why I wasn't considering this. And that kind of sparked the spark for me, well, maybe this is something that I might consider. And that's kind of where it went from there. And here we are today.
And you wouldn't have no option of, or anything against posting it then because you would still have a chance to get it, and you would still have the insight.
If the council wishes to go down that road, that's completely their wish. There's nothing I can do about it. Is there further discussion, and can we entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to table it, until we check further backgrounds of this stuff.
Well, I guess I have a question in regards to the Union, because right now, the way that we are structured is, well, I, I guess I don't even know for sure, because we have those job descriptions and we have our old job descriptions. So if we choose to post it, can we post it as just Clerk Treasurer? Because the way that the Union is written is it's Administrator. Can we change that?
Those job descriptions haven't have been passed or adopted, or there was no motion or anything made out of them. So those.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Those were just written.
Yeah.
They're, they're not approved yet or whatever.
Got it.
So we're still operating under those old job descriptions right now.
Do we have the leeway then, if we post it, to change it to Clerk Treasurer?
Yes. That does not mean that I, we would not petition to have them part of the bargaining unit.
Correct.
And with the new contract coming up, it would be in the negotiated part.
Well, no.
No, that is not negotiated. That is part of, that is something the Bureau of Media and Service determines whether or not that position would be appropriate to be in our bargaining unit, based on how it was filed in the first place.
And they would have supervisory duties.
The salary in that, yes, that would be negotiable.
Because the other issue is, is, I guess, from what I see my perspective, is Shawn right now is Public Works. If he applies for this new position, maybe he doesn't want the Public Works aspect of it anymore. You know what I mean?
Oh, yeah.
Because we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be posting it as Public Works Clerk Treasurer. We'd just be posting it as Clerk Treasurer. So then what do we do in that situation? So it's not that simple to just post it, because you have to consider. We wouldn't be posting the same position if we were to.
Because you posted, you don't have to.
No, but why would we, why would?
Well, if, if we would run across a prime candidate, we'd be foolish not to.
I'm sorry, what was that? I missed that statement.
If we'd run across a prime candidate, we'd be prime, we would be foolish not to. A lot of taxpayers are going to tell you, they don't mind spending a little extra money, but they want the top grade or the best we can get.
But do the taxpayers realize how much this really costs?
Do you?
It was discussed.
Yes, I, I do. This is what I do for a living. I hire people. That's what I do at work. I know how much it costs. It's not cheap. And I don't think, unless you're necessarily in this, doing that job, a lot of people don't understand that, yes, it can cost tens of thousands of dollars. I don't think all 3,000 taxpayers understand that, what the outlay would be if we posted it. Yes, it sounds good, let's look outside, that's great, but I don't think they really understand what the cost would be.
If any of them have come to you within the last week and discussed it with you, have you explained to them what it costs?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I have also, and like we said, there, you know, we can ask these guys right here, "Are you okay with spending $20,000 to hire the right person for this job?" I don't know. Yeah? I mean, I know you talked, it's just.
But see, you're.
I don't want to put anybody on the spot, sorry about that.
You're not going to make everybody happy.
We're not, no, we're not.
So we just need to.
God, I was if we did.
We're not worried about making people happy, we're worried about the best for the citizens and the city of my boroughs.
Exactly, but whatsoever best for the citizens, there's always going to be someone that's not happy. So I think we should just move on with, if we're going to make a motion, do whatever.
See, there was a motion pending, and that was to table it. Is there a second on that motion? Hearing none, the motion fails. Is there a second motion?
Do you have a question, Ruth?
I, I mean, I think to simply ask the citizens, whether or not they're willing to spend $20,000 to recruit somebody is, is only part of the question. The other question is, are you willing to pay an additional amount to pay that person to do that job? That's above and beyond what the budget amount is and everything else. So I mean, I, I think it's one thing to say, "It might cost us $5,000 to $20,000 to do the recruiting." It's another thing to say, "Oh, but by the way, we're now going to have to pay that person a minimum of $70,000 plus continue to pay existing staff where they're at." That's, that's a different way of phrasing the question than simply saying, "Do you wish to invest money into C and what, what else people, you know, what's out there?"
How about if we phrase it this way?
I don't, I'm just saying that's.
Right.
For my, for my, I mean, it's, it's giving the people a little more information that, yes, it's going to cost us money to do it, and I, I'm not, it doesn't matter to me. I'm just saying, to, to look at it and say, "Are you willing to pay money to find somebody as well as it might be Shawn?" Yes, okay, that's one question. But then say, "Shawn gets it, we're, then we're going to have, we're going to have to address the issue whether or not we're going to fill the Public Works Director's spot." Along with that, then there's additional costs. So there, there's, it's a double inch.[1770.71] So there, there's, it's a double inch, it's kind of like, if we go down this path, it costs this much, but if we go down this path, it costs this much. The question is, which path do you wanna go down? Because they don't, they, they may blend at the end, but they may not blend. Because you can't, because if you're gonna post it as a clerk treasurer, city clerk treasurer, you can't later say, well, Sean, you're still the best candidate, so we're gonna make a city court treasurer, public works, that's, then you are not advertising-
Well, that we could do-
Honestly, on what, anything else.
We could do like we're doing right now, if Sean wanted to keep those titles along with the new title.
If, if you're looking at doing an outside hire, you're looking at anywhere from ten to fourteen for the cost of search, you're looking at, with an outside hire, you would need to lay off one person, which would be a problem, probably around ten K in unemployment, I would imagine, give or take.
Why do we have to lay off somebody?
Because there's not a position that, that is available if we don't hire from within.
Okay, so, pro, hold on.
Let me finish. And then you're also looking at the salary for the, for the new hire, somewhere between forty-five to sixty-five, depending upon what their qualifications are. So your first year is anywhere from sixty-five to eighty-five thousand. That's your first year. And thereafter, you're looking at forty-five to sixty-five thousand additional, in addition to where we're at now on, on payroll. Okay?
Okay. So prior to Barb leaving here, her biggest thing was hiring another person in the office. We now have that person in the office, and now you're telling me, because this is what they pushed for for two years, we need more help, we need more help, we need more help. So we now have that in position, and now you're telling me we have to eliminate them when they begged for that for two years?
We looked at the structure-
Okay.
With the city staff, and addressed the city staff's structure with council, which was passed-
Right.
To have a three-person administrative office.
Okay, and then I just-
Can I interject something?
Yeah.
Michelle, I think when she was talking about it, it was just part-time to cover, like over lunches and kind of that kind of stuff. Or when someone was out of the office for meetings, or, I don't think it was a full-time person that she was looking for.
The number of people haven't changed.
Yeah.
The number of people haven't changed.
Right, correct. But we're still paying the same, well, less, less, fifty-five percent less-
You're saying we are twenty-five.
Than what we were. So another question that we could possibly have is, do we really need to hire somebody right now? Can we wait until May of 2016, when Barb is no longer-
Well, I don't think these two are willing to continue doing what they're doing.
If we were to maybe give them an incre, a, a, I don't know, some kind of an increase to do the extra duties that they are doing. You know, because-
Then why don't we just give them the positions then?
Because we still, because if a small increase-
It's harder to change, unchange than it is to change.
Well, say we give Sean, you know, three, I'm just throwing numbers, three dollars an hour and two dollars an hour, that's not gonna make up twenty, thirty thousand dollars. You know what I'm, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it, it could, I'm not figuring numbers. But, um, what we need to remember is that we still have hundred and twenty thousand dollars we need to pay off. So do we really have it out there to hire somebody, or can we just give them? So when- You're looking confused, because I'm kind of, I know, okay.
Well, Wendy went through this before.
When we gave the budget, we said, how are we gonna pay for this, and you guys voted on a no increase.
I think, I don't know that you can do that, because I think you have to get a clerk treasurer-
You have to have a clerk treasurer position.
Yeah.
Because we're operating right now under, outside of the law.
Just deputy clerk.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
You have to, maybe we'll check with Mark, I don't know that I have to do that. I think you gotta get somebody with that title.
Okay. Okay, Mike, as our attorney then, the question I just asked, can you answer that?
I was speaking with Rick, can you?
Yep, okay. So right now, we, they're telling us, like they told us last time, we needed a city administrator. But now under state statute, we have to go under city treasurer, is that right?
City clerk-
City clerk treasurer.
You have to have somebody who-
We have to have that by state statute.
That is state statute.
So then my question was, do we need to hire somebody, or could we wait until May of 2016 to get Barb's financial portion off the books and be done? So that we have a whole new budget and can figure that in.
Well, that's, first, it's not a legal question, it's really a budgetary question.
So legally, well, I mean, because we're just, she just said, state statute says, we have to have a clerk treasurer. Do, okay, so do we have to hire, can we wait to hire until May of 2016? Or do we have to?
Right, well, we do have a deputy clerk.
Correct.
And you do treasurer functions.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, that's what you do.
Yeah. But that's, and I know the deputy clerk-
So you just change your title to deputy clerk treasurer?
I mean, it's, to me, it's a title change. I mean, she, she is, you are-
The treasurer.
Deputy clerk treasurer. But there, you're saying clerk treasurer.
The state statute says you have to have a city clerk and a treasurer if you want a person. So what they're asking is, can I just stay doing, being the deputy clerk? And do it, and I don't know how long you can, I don't know the law, I don't have any idea if there's anything that says you can't, you have to go so long, I have no idea. I don't know.
Right.
I just know by statute, you have to have a city clerk treasurer.
That's not your point.
It's a, it's a great question, because technically, you're not the clerk.
Yeah.
I know, you're the deputy clerk and do treasurer duties.
So we technically have that person in place, it's just title length.
Between Sean and Wendy, the duties are covered, it's just a matter of title. But I think it's a, it's a great question. You know, and something I frankly don't know off the top of my head, is to how we would do that. I think, you know, as I listen to things, if you're gonna think about tonight, and you're looking at posting, I mean, one of the things I would wanna know is, what are the positions, what are the correct titles, and do we have the correct job descriptions? I would wanna, I would wanna know that, and have that down before-
You vote on it.
Before you vote on it.
And we don't have that.
And I don't think you have that tonight.
We certainly don't.
No.
Right.
You know, so this is something where, frankly, I have really good discussion points, but in order to get this right, maybe you sit down, you figure out what the numbers are, right? You have Sean propose, or, if you figure out a number for Sean,
Yep.
Figure out what that looks like, and then you come back to the table, and you have the discussion again.
And the, the issue that I've got with it is that we've gone that route, and then it got all thrown into the air again. So I wanna make sure that we have a consensus from the council before we start doing more work to move towards that end. And if we don't have a consensus from the council, it makes no sense to go do the extra work.
Because a job description basically is gonna depend on whether you, well, I can't post it, or whether you-
And what I can do in the meantime is look at that legal issue. Because I think it's a, it's a significant legal issue, is the city in compliance right now? I mean, that's really the question on that particular issue.
Well, by motion, we are, because we were motioned to conduct the critical duties until otherwise instructed not to.
Right.
So, so let's go back to the question I had an hour and a half ago, I think, when we started this. Why didn't we put, look at all this investigation, make sure that we needed an administrator, like we were told, and now we don't? Make sure that we have everything we need before we, you know, before we got on our agenda to promote Wendy?
That was-
Well, now we changed it, now promote Sean.
That was ask and answer.
But no, it's not ask and answer, you should have done all the stuff.
I think the options, there's more than one option here, because each avenue is gonna require a large sum of work. I think we came into it under the assumption it would be one option. There was kickback, so now we're weighing another option.
But these options, what I'm saying, it should have been-
But they didn't come to fruition until the first option was discussed. And then this other option came about. So you can't discuss it, you can't have it prepared ahead of time-
We didn't know these- Right. And we did not know these options until our agenda came out Friday, we had a meeting on Monday. So we didn't know what your options as a personnel committee were, until we got our agenda on Friday.
Correct, but there's this thing called quorums, which prevent us from having a whole lot of communication prior to city council meeting.
Exactly, but as the mayor, Greg should have put out an email.
That's a circular meeting, you can't do that either.
Listen, let me finish. You should have directed Wendy or Sean, actually, sorry, our attorney, to say, this is what our discussion is, please send out an email, as I can't do that, because it is a quorum of the council. You should have directed Mike or Andy to do that, so that we knew what was coming before Friday, and you gave us the weekend to go, what the hell is he doing? We should have discussed this.
Please handle the language, would you, we just went through a lot of-
You know, right, we did. I, I didn't call you an F word.
That's a good thing, because then you'd be down on the ground.
Good lord, I'd be in a grievance if I did. But seriously, Greg, you should have put that to Mike and Andy, and this is what I've said all along, it's all about the communication. No, I can't send an email to all of you, but our attorney can, or Wendy can, you know, or even Sean can.
Hey, Michelle, we did work through that, and we worked on the information that we had. And as a personnel committee, we came up with a plan, working with our employees that worked to the good of the city.
Right, but you didn't work with your council.
And then it got kicked back to us.
But you presented it-
So we revisited again, and we received different information from the League of Minnesota Cities.
Right, but that's what I'm saying.
And we addressed that issue. And now what we wanna do is-
You're interrupting me.
No, you're interrupting me.
You should have done all of that before, last Monday at the meeting, we were told we had to have a city administrator. Today, we find out we don't. We should have had all the facts. That is the due diligence of what we need to do, is all of the facts.
Michelle never answered an hour ago.
Right, but you didn't do it. We need to have, before we even decide, we need to know all of the facts, as we said. Sean's paid, Anna's paid. Everything needs to be out there.
We could spend another six months to a year.
We could, but it's still what needs to be done.
If that's what it takes, if that's what it takes.
Yes.
It shouldn't take that.
But here we are to discuss some of this stuff right now, and you're just focused on what happened at the last meeting.
Now it's time to listen to our city attorney, when he said to-
The city attorney is saying what exactly I just said.
You should have the facts and figures here, instead of voting on-
So isn't that what I just said?
Yes, I didn't say we have to vote.
So now that it comes from the city attorney, it's okay?
We didn't say that. We asked you.
No, you didn't.
So I, I made a motion to table it-
Go with what Mike said.
In regards to what the city attorney said, you guys made that down.
No, you made a motion well before he said what he said.
But he still made it, and now we're the same thing.
I'll make the motion again now.
What's your motion?
That we table it until we get the facts and figures solved out here.
Well, I think you need to, okay.
Motion to table the hiring decision until more information is provided.
Well, I think we need to have a date, and I think we need to figure out what information we want provided, so we don't end up in a situation-
Could you repeat what you discussed, Mike? If you remember?
Well, I didn't put a date out there.
No, just everything that you discussed.
Okay. So, bottom line, I think you need to come to another meeting, probably a work session like this, understanding what the exact positions are if you post, so what are the titles?
What is the pay?
What's the pay, what's the job description? And you need to have that locked and ready to go. Okay, so that you're in a position to be able to vote on that, as to whether you post or not.
I make a motion that we pursue job descriptions-
You have a motion to table.
Oh, motion to table.
Until we find more information.
Until we find-
Are you more discussing the facts?
Well, I think not only do we need to have it ready to go for posting it, I think we need to have it ready to go for Sean as well. I was gonna say, what if we don't post it? We need to look at-
We need to have it.
We need it either way.
We need it either way.
We need both options, clearly laid out, what the cost is gonna be, what the titles are. If we go with the Sean route, what Anna's promotion will be, and what her new pay scale will be. We need the descriptions cleared out, or explained clearly for everyone, if we promote from within, because that's probably gonna mean some duty changes potentially for Wendy and Sean, and Anna. So essentially, there's gonna be, you know, two options.
Two options.
But clearly explained.
And that was-
Are we missing anything?
No, and that's what I was, so I was gonna follow through, you'd have an A and a B.
Sorry.
Option, that's okay. You got it exactly how I was saying, so you have an option A and an option B.
So, now, are you willing to expand on that motion, or do you wanna withdraw it for now?
No, I'll go on the same motion, and we have the facts and figures as per the city attorney.
And I've got a question. As a staff, what direction do you wanna give to us to go? What do we need to do to get this moving?
We need to write, we need to write job description, two separate job descriptions, one, if you're gonna post it, and one, if you're gonna-
And accept, and one with different job titles.
But actually, they may not have to be your job, that's gonna be the council's job.
Do a job description?
Wouldn't it?
Uh-uh.
Wouldn't we keep the job descriptions the same?
No.
You can't.
But we could.
Because it says administrator clerk treasurer.
No, you can't.
But if you're saying you're making two moves?
No, because if we promote Sean from within, he's public works clerk treasurer.
Right.
We can't post that job.
So you'd have to have one.
No, and then if we post it, we have to post for a clerk treasurer.
Just a clerk.
And then we'll have figures-
So here's our third question.
We'll have figures over there, and we'll have figures here.
Right. So we need two sets of job descriptions, two sets of numbers.
So, what's so hard about that?
Well, I'm gonna be doing the work, so, or will be doing the work. Public works treasurer job description. Clerk treasurer.
Yeah.
And a clerk treasurer job description. What else?
Okay.
On one side, you've got public works, clerk treasurer, deputy clerk. You have got a utility clerk, or clerk one, clerk two.
We've got all those.
Yep. Okay? And the clerk treasurer needs to be just a straight clerk treasurer, not administrator clerk treasurer, we don't have that straight clerk treasurer. Okay, on the other side, you would need a public works slash clerk treasurer. You'd need a deputy clerk, administrative assistant, and the-
Clerk two?
Clerk one, clerk two, for utilities.
Yep, that wouldn't change.
The additions to that will be outside hire cost, and any unemployment cost estimated.
Clarification, sir?
Yeah.
Under the option one, I'm going to, under either options, the administrat, administrative, city administrator, those duties would have to be divided up. So that would be, so even though, even though you may have some job descriptions now, you don't, because it would be divided up accordingly.
Mm-hmm.
So, I can just clarify-
No, 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 that's right.
So, so the salaries are gonna be reflected accordingly, because, no, no matter, no matter which direction you go, those duties are now going to be whether or not Sean assumes, for lack of a better way, Sean assumes all of them under the public work clerk treasurer, or whether he relinquishes, or, or the council decides, some of those should fall under the deputy clerk, or some of those duties should fall under administrative assistant, or whatever.
And then the comparable worth analysis would need to be done for those positions, based on what their job duties are. That's the state comp worth.
Correct.
And that would then give us the salary range for that position. Based on what their duties are. That's what I was looking at for clarification, so that we give authorization to move forward with those two options, just like what we, we got there.
Didn't sound that way to me, you wanted to vote on it either one way or the other.
I asked you to table it, so we could clarify, that's what I wanted to do. Or withdraw it, so we could clarify.
Well, I just wanna see a consensus before we pour another month's worth of work into this, and then have it blown down to two.
Well, I tell you what, it's kinda hard to say, because that's kind of the job. At this point, nobody sitting here knows exactly what's gonna happen, or what's gonna be best. To me, it's gonna happen, what kind of figures you come back with, and what kind of figures Wendy wants.
Well, I think we've got that covered to go either way now, so.
So it's just a matter of throwing it together, and if we do it, we do it, and if we don't, we don't.
And can we just clarify who's doing all this work to get all this together?
Primarily, it's Wendy and Sean.
Personnel committee's not in this? I just-
Do a review it, yes. Primarily, the people doing the most of the work is Wendy and Sean.
Yeah, the people creating the job descriptions, they'll throw out the number as far as what they think is reasonable.
And then we review the comparable worth assessments, and review the job descriptions at the personnel committee.
And then upon doing this, you will have all the, where you found all this information? Comparable worth, pay, where you're getting your facts and figures from? Comparable worth, pay, where you're getting your facts and figures from?
We certainly can provide it, it's no secret.
Yep, it's on the table.
Two thousand nine state job match evaluation, hasn't been updated since.
It's out there. So there is still a motion on the table.
You said that, Lloyd.
Again, there's still a motion on the table.
And it was seconded.
And was seconded?
Yes.
You gonna repeat the motion?
Yeah, repeat the motion, somebody. You can table it until we get all the facts and figures according to the city attorney.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay. Lloyd?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Jill?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
I vote I. Motion made to clarify it and to pursue the job descriptions for both options, to outside hire, inside hire, and the costs associated with it, and reevaluate the potential for hiring from within based on Sean filling that position and Wendy filling that position. Moving on.
Okay. How soon do we want to do this?
You're not gonna do it overnight.
No.
No, it's about a month for the work.
Yeah, we.
The council meeting July, I'll be in Canada.
So what do you?
July eighteenth.
Well, we can go to August.
We can go, whatever your timeline, or whatever. I don't want, we don't want to take away vacation.
No, I scheduled this back in January, so.
Where are you going?
Canada.
We're looking to move in the personnel committee to the third Monday. Is that worth for you? Or the third, no, fourth Monday?
Would it be advantageous if we do pursue this to hold a special meeting? I think it would be.
I think so.
Yes.
The other issue is we talked about moving the personnel committee so it isn't on the morning of the council meeting. And I want to explore that with Jill. The fourth Monday, does that work for you? Actually, the third Monday, because the third Monday offsets the council meeting, correct?
No. Council meeting is the second Monday.
Yeah, but the third Monday?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
And that would give you.
Does the third Monday work for you?
Give you three or four weeks before the council meeting.
Yeah, okay, understood.
So we're moving that to Wednesday.
I make a motion to move the personnel committee to the third Monday of the month at nine AM. Is there a second?
All second. I was going to, but I thought that would be.
Melissa?
I.
Jill?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
I vote I. Lloyd?
Hi.
Motion carries five oh. Okay.
When, when do you expect this, I'm sorry, mayor, council, when do you expect to have this?
I'd like.
Media nonsense, now these, both of these employees have been doing these duties for seven months without compensation, and I don't think there's too many people in this room would want to have that headache and not, and not to say, okay, we're gonna put it off another month, we're gonna put it off to May two thousand sixteen. I'll guarantee you that would not fly in most places.
Right, and we just.
That's what he thought.
I'd like to have it for the June council meeting if we can. We'll have a personnel committee meeting before that.
Will we? Look at the, look at our business.
No, you won't.
No, we won't, will we?
No. Hey, these, these two are putting it together, let's ask these two.
I leave the fourth of July and I come back the thirteenth, I believe.
So we could move the council meeting to like the third Monday or the fourth Monday?
Well, we can still hold our regular council meeting, just hold a special.
Yeah. We have it later.
Or we could.
That gives us a few more weeks.
We could do it on the fourth Monday of June, so it'd be the twenty ninth, so June before Sean leaves.
And the personnel committee could meet on the third Monday.
Or the fifth Monday, I guess.
You can do that, sure.
There's five Mondays in June.
There's five Mondays in June.
So on the twenty ninth?
No, there's not.
Yeah, there is.
Can we do it by June?
Because the fourth Monday, we have that voluntary meeting, correct?
Can we have it done by June twenty ninth?
But the twenty ninth is.
Well, if you guys don't have it done, you don't have it done. And we don't want to rush this, this is something we gotta live with, so. We're not gonna do it like you did. But the issue is, we need to resolve it.
Almost six weeks, five and a half weeks.
That'll give us a week prior to meet with the personnel committee, correct?
Well, we'll meet on the fifteenth technically.
We'll meet on the fifteenth.
Oh, two weeks, then.
So we have two weeks after, yeah.
We can certainly shoot for that and see what happens.
So June twenty ninth, a work meeting. June fifteenth, personnel meeting.
Yes.
To review and publicly find out.
What day is the council meeting, though?
The eighth.
The eighth.
Regular on this day.
Okay. Goals and objectives. You had in your packet a review of the key projects and the objectives. This is a compilation of what we discussed in our work session to establish goals and key projects for the city. You also were handed out a key project, a key project prioritization. And what this is, is a method to prioritize those based on the consensus of what takes the highest priority. When you're rating these, you'll see in the top, you can only rate a nine, three, a one, or a zero under each of the columns. So if it's a nine, it's a high level importance for the city operations. A three would be marginal, a one would be low level, and a zero would have no impact. So for each of those goals and those key projects that are listed under them, not the goals, the key projects under them, I need you to rate those. I prefer that we get those rated this evening, but I don't know if we can get that back. How long will it take you to do those?
Next council meeting?
I've got a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Third row down in the green.
Change person.
Oh, you did? Okay. No, I wasn't aware of that, sorry.
You got an old one.
Okay.
Okay.
So a little bit of work improvement for city operations is what we have?
Mine says, mine says differently. Yeah, it's been corrected.
There's three different ones.
What can we?
There you go, Sean.
He's got, there's one right here.
Oh. I noticed this this morning, that's why I didn't know it was correct.
Would we be able, if we did it now, would we be able to talk about it at the June twenty ninth workshop? We could put it back on the agenda for the June twenty ninth workshop? Everybody rate them and bring them back then?
That'll be good.
Rate them now?
No, no, no.
Between now and June twenty ninth.
Yeah, instead of bringing it to the June eighth, we could discuss it at the June twenty ninth workshop.
We can take this home and go?
And it's great, because that's up to you, I guess, but what about if we discuss that at the workshop instead of the council meeting?
That would make sense.
That's my, my question.
A lot of conversation.
And it's a simple rating, so it doesn't take a lot to do them.
Yeah, that was my question when you said.
I'd like to be looking back sooner so we can evaluate what the scores are, so I need your scores before that. So if you could turn in your scores by June eighth.
To Wendy or Sean?
To Wendy or Sean, and then I can tally them and give us the final prioritized list by June twenty ninth. That then gives the guys that are working an idea of what takes priority and what precedents based on a consensus of the council and the key staff. Anything else for the good of the city?
I'm sorry.
It says the same thing right there.
What's that? Which one?
Robin, is that anyone then?
Says inside sales.
Oh, it shouldn't say inside sales, it should say, or city operations is what it should say.
There is say in city operations, I changed them.
Yep. Okay. Any questions on how to rate that?
I've got a couple of questions.
Sir?
Do you know how to rate it? Do you need some directions?
Well, the idea is, it's right there. Like if you rated one, it's not, zero is not important to one.
Can we do the first one?
Let's go through, let's go through the first one. Key objective one A dash one, which is develop a shared vision, mission, and purpose statements for the city. As far as an increase in our overall productivity, I don't think that's a key piece for it, so I rated it a three. It's marginal level. We need it to move forward, but it can be done without it. As far as priorities work and reduces confusion, I rated that very high, that's a nine. For reduce operational costs, there's not really gonna be any reduction in cost based on having a good vision, mission statement. However, it does have impact on the other things that are gonna fall out of it, so I rated that a three. Improves public relations, I don't know whether the public has a great deal of interest in whether or not we have a good vision, mission, or statement. They may, they may not, so I rated it a three. Improves internal communication, that's very high because it allows people to know what's a priority for us as a council and know what needs to take priority in work, so I rated it a nine. Ease of completing the, the objective, it's relatively easy to create the vision, mission statements because they're already done. Okay, so I rated that a nine, it's very easy. The compilations on that make it a two hundred and fifty-eight as far as the rating score. Okay? What I will do is I will take all of your ratings, assemble those together to get a, a final rating as to what our total compiled adjustment score for the hierarchy of that particular objective. So like I said, you can only use a nine, a three, a one, or a zero, there's no other ratings. And you rate under each column as to what you think that has pertaining to that column in blue, as to how that impacts it. Is that clear? I mean, it's, it's a tough one as far as this matrix is to get it, but once you get it done, the only thing you gotta remember is that you only give a nine, three, a one, or a zero.
Say, so thirteen, eleven, nine, seven, five, three mean nothing.
Those are multipliers. Okay, thirteen, eleven.
Where did this come from?
This one? It's a, it's a prioritization tool that we use at three M for, for key, key projects and objectives.
Can you define us the definition between the comprehensive plan and the capital improvement plan?
The comprehensive plan is a five-year plan, it's more detailed. The CIP is the capital improvement plan that lays out those key projects for the next twenty years. So the CIP is a twenty-year plan. The five-year plan is just that, it's a five-year plan, but it's a little more detailed because it's short-term.
Parts of the CIP.
Parts of the CIP are included in the five-year plan. You can't have the, you can't have the five-year plan until you're pretty much set on what your objectives are for the twenty-year plan. Okay? And then the other piece of it, there's another one down here that has the financial pieces of that, which is the financial piece of the CIP and the financial piece of the, the five-year plan, those are broken up separately. There's also a place down at the very bottom for you to add any other key objectives that you may have. It's like three lines down there, so if you've got other key objectives you think need to be added to that, by all means, do so. We'll look at where they fall out and where we can get to those. Any other questions? There is, bud? Anything else for the good of the city? Motion to adjourn?